I would like to call the city council meeting for July 11th, 2018 to order. And at this time, as many of you may have been out today at various opportunities for a moment of silence, how fortunate we are to live in this beautiful city. It was a beautiful day, a lot of activity throughout our entire city, new developments happening, new activities, people enjoying our community. And sometimes we have a tendency, we get locked into our own little worlds, we think about the challenges that we face, but let's make sure we focus on the opportunities and the blessings that we have. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. And again, Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Kuhl.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Jackie. And again, I want to wish everyone a good evening. And as we begin this meeting of the city council, I want to continue to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council under a public hearing item or a standing committee item, you will have that opportunity during that time. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business at the which goes towards the end of the meeting. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, which I know you all will. So thank you all again for being here. Will and Alderman move the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for June 27th? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Great, those are approved. Do we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Spiegel. Will and Alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for July 3rd, 2018? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you, that is approved. There are no appointments or proclamations for this evening, and there are no presentations this evening. Do we have any petitions or communications from any of our members of the council? Seeing one, Alderman McGinnis.
Yes, just one more reminder of the third ward meeting, July 3rd ward meeting. It's Saturday, July 14th at 10:00 a.m., Cedar Memorial Christian Church, 306 West 3rd Street. We will have a short meeting, taking, you know, issues and concerns as we do every meeting, and then we will adjourn to the Buchanan School Naval Station project at Oak and West 6th Street and see what's happening over there. It's a very exciting project. Anybody that wants to be an honorary third ward member is welcome to join us as well. So again, the meeting starts at 10:00 at Cedar Memorial Christian Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind everyone that instead of having my regular ward meeting, I will be going to the screening of Voiceless at The Figgy, which is at 5:30, and Vanessa McNeil, who's the filmmaker, will be speaking afterwards, and I encourage second ward and everyone else to join. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. I see no other comments. We're going to move on to individual approval items on the discussion agenda. Our first one is a third consideration for ordinance case number ROD 18-01, amending title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning, HCOD Highway Corridor Overlay District and ECOD Elmore Corners Overlay District by creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and Design Standards. Are there any public with comments on this issue?
Good evening, Your Honor. Chair, Mr. Chair, my name is Candy Pasternak. I've been visiting between the P&amp;Z and here since April, so we all know why I'm here. I'm a resident of the 6th Ward, and I'm employed and a property owner in the 3rd Ward. As shared in the past meetings with this council, with the P&amp;Z Commission, Committee of the Whole, THF supports the ordinance as presented to this council by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which creates an Elmore Corners Overlay District that does not include THF's Davenport Commons development. Up until June 13th, the last time this body met as the council, when this matter was put to a vote, the vote has been unanimously in favor of the recommendation from planning and zoning. Honestly, as I stand here today, I don't see any reason to change that vote. I'm not sure what has changed in terms of the dynamics, the history, the makeup of the property, and the basis for which P&amp;Z made its decision to keep THF out. THF, Davenport Commons, is a developed property. Throughout these proceedings, THF has presented to the council in terms of quantifiable numbers, the contributions THF has made over the years, not only at the Davenport Commons development, but even south of 53rd from 46th on north. So in a situation where we're looking at the contributions a developer makes to the community, THF has made significant contributions, not just directly but indirectly in the number of businesses that have started as a result of their development, the number of businesses that had the opportunity to have road to their development because of THF's contribution to the infrastructure expenses in that area. We recognize and appreciate that we all have different opinions, and I have yet to hear, and I apologize that my opinion may differ from some of yours, but I have yet to hear a legitimate, quantifiable explanation as to why P&amp;Z's recommendation of an Elmore Corners Overlay District that commences north of 59th is not a benefit to the city. I'm not certain what the addition of the THF Davenport Commons development does for that addition. If that were the case, then why doesn't it go all the way down to 53rd? I guess I don't understand that. With respect to the quantifiable explanation as to why THF believes it should remain out, we've discussed about the $45 million of investment, direct investment that THF has. We've talked about the $4.2 million of contribution to the infrastructure, one most recently as January 31st, 2018, when they contributed for the traffic signal. At this point, we believe the council should stand by its previous unanimous votes to approve the Elmore Corners Overlay District ordinance as recommended by P&amp;Z. We thank you for your time and your consideration. We believe P&amp;Z got it right, and we believe council has gotten it right in the two previous readings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
My name is Robert Green. I reside at 4100 White Pine Court, Columbia, Missouri. I represent the developer, THF Davenport North Development LLC, and I want to thank you all for your time and Candy for all your hard work. I don't have a lot to add to what the council has already heard, but in short, this is not our dream for our property. We will be affected with its markability across the board. We've been waiting almost 20 years to develop these tracks, and it will be very hard for anyone to find a business that will be encumbered with the same restrictions that are being proposed in this ordinance. In addition, we have an ECR that is in much stronger level of design requirements than for parking, for example. We don't oppose stuff like landscaping. We don't oppose stuff like restrictions on drives. We have a restriction on a height limitation. The Elmore Corners District pamphlet, some 20, 28, 30 pages that's passed out, contemplates two-story. We can't even do two-story. We will be at a disadvantage in competition with the rest of the community. From 59th, I just call it the overhead lines, where the boundary stops to the north, beyond 46th, where we have other property. This is not our dream. We ask that you support the decisions that you've already made, and we ask that no amendment comes before to change those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I think our next step is will and Alderman move third consideration of the ordinance?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions from any Alderman? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, first off, I want to thank THF. I've been blessed to be around on the city council 18 years ago when they first came to town, and the city embraced them. What they did, they brought two Walmarts, a Sam's Club, and many, many additional businesses that went into those developments. From the thousand of people that built it, from our tradespeople and the many contractors, whether it was what we're talking about now or West Locust. And then the additional, they brought in 60 different businesses over that 18 years. They were the catalyst. And out of those 60 businesses, every one of them averages 300-plus employees. You know, the economic impact THF has had to our great city is almost immeasurable. We've seen the largest economic growth from the time they came in the history of Davenport. From the thousand of people that built the buildings to the 10,000 to 20,000 people that they employed, you know, we just, we got to thank them because we're internally in debt to what THF has done for our great city. Whether it's the new casino or the new Costco, they've all come on the tails of THF's development. You know, they're still attracting the businesses. So, you know, I think it was a simple request that they've made, and our zoning board agreed with them, and for what they've done, to be the, a driver of so many jobs and billions and billions and billions of dollars of economic growth and impact over 18 years, it's phenomenal. You know, we look across the river to our friends in Rock Island, what they did to draw a Walmart and this type of development, and they were unsuccessful. And here we're thinking about denying them a very simple request. You know, I just, we voted in agreement for the last two council meetings, and then for a council to make a switch like this, you know, if you were doing that in the business world, it would be called bait and switch, and they'd be reporting to the Better Business Bureau. But, you know, there's not a good government bureau to report, you know, people that have these kinds of ideas, but down the road, it'll come back and have a real impact to the city and to the past hard work of councils and mayors. So I think very carefully about denying their request.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Kuhl.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got four points that I'd like to make tonight. First one is to apologize to Attorney Pasternak and Robert Green for delaying this vote the last two weeks. I really felt that the possibility that the vote might go to a supermajority vote if the amended motion goes forward required that we have all city council members here, and we have that tonight, and I look forward to a good discussion, and I appreciate Alderman Ambrose's beginning. And actually, the good neighbor thing is my third point. But I want to start with just saying that I appreciate the advocacy that we've had over the last seven or eight weeks, beginning with Attorney Jaeger. I think it's been good, and you have responded to questions that the council has had every time that you've come back, and I appreciate that. Most interesting, Alderman, Gripp and I sat down with the Pasternaks and Robert last week to talk, and I really gained some new insights in terms of what it's like for a developer to look at this situation, and it was, it was very good for me to see, and it's helped to balance my opinion on what it is that we should do here this evening, because this evening is when we have to come together. We've unanimously approved to move this motion forward. It doesn't mean that we approved the motion as it existed, but we continued to move it forward as a discussion item so that the public would have the opportunity to comment and council members as well. The issue of the good neighbor, there is absolutely no doubt that THF has been a good neighbor since 2001, when they first developed, and they homesteaded this area. As Alderman Ambrose said, they started something out there. You all had a vision for something that perhaps the city, had we been more aware, would have seen that as well, but we didn't. But you did, and you're to be congratulated for that. The $43 million in investment has been considerable, and I suspect that the return on investment has been very good from what I've seen out there in terms of cars in those businesses. The stoplight, I mean, that was something that in 2001, the city council and THF agreed that at some point it would be necessary to put that stoplight in. The city never conducted a traffic study. THF took it on their own to put that traffic light in, and again, they're to be commended for that. So a good neighbor, absolutely. My last point is the big picture. And as we sat down with Robert and Candy and Tom last week, the big picture from Robert was to attract tenants, and I know that's important. It's very important. But as I thought about it, I said, well, it's true, and I think the city council, for the most part, over the years, has been very much, has leaned towards that type of view, that is, that we should make sure that our retailers come in there and that we provide them the optimum opportunity to have a sightline, to have those kinds of things that will bring shoppers out to their businesses. But as an Alderman, when I ran just most recently, I said, you know what, what's important to me, the big picture for me, is the vibrancy of this city and how we move forward and how we're intentional about how we do it. You know, just most recently, and we have discussions now with some of my constituents on Lorton, Fairhaven, and 51st Street, where we're talking about development right, right south of 53rd. And as we think about that, and I talk to those people, I said, you know, it's most recently that 53rd was a gravel road. It's not a gravel road anymore. It's changed, and it'll never be the same again. And Elmore is not the same as it was. Again, THF came in and developed something which was wonderful, and it did start growth in that area. But the times have changed since 2018, and I think it's reasonable to expect that over time, the city's requirements, the bar might be raised. I don't think we can lower it. The city spent a good deal of money with Wendell to put together some guidelines that we believe are important. There was a concern in terms of the developer that retailers, of course, might not be as attracted to the area with these additional requirements that we're putting on, and I, it's absolutely true. I think that there will be more consideration on retailers before they move in, but I don't see that in Coralville in West Des Moines or Des Moines, that it has stopped retailers from coming in. And my vision of a vibrant community is one that not only maximizes the opportunity for shoppers to come out and shop, but builds a livable community, a community where you can go and not just go in and come out, but go and appreciate the aesthetic experience. And perhaps aesthetics seems kind of light, but you know, one of the things that we did on the school board some years ago, when we were rebuilding some of our schools, Eisenhower School, we built a portico above the entrance to the school building, and it was not entirely practical, but it added a sense of beauty. It was art. And I believe that those students that go through that portico every day have a sense that there's something different, that there's something of value there, and it's not just a place to come and sit down and be taught, but it was a place to come and live and be. And I think the same thing about the overlay concept. It's so important that we've developed this, and we're going to move on with that. We've already worked with Rockingham. Brady is coming up. We have been intentional about saying that we want Davenport to be something different. We can continue to develop as we have in the past, and we can maximize the retail opportunities, but I think that if my goal of bringing millennials back to Davenport is going to succeed, we're going to have to do things differently. We can't do what we've always done. So, you know, the mayor starts the preamble every week. He says, "To make Davenport a greater place to live." And I would hope that, just like my constituents on Lorton, Fairhaven, and 51st, that THF will say, "We want to continue to be a good neighbor, and we realize that Davenport has stepped it up a little bit," that they don't want to do things that they've always done because there's a better way to do it, and there are so many examples of how that can be done. And so it's with that that I would move to amend this motion to include THF in this, in the motion.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let me look at process here. We have a discussion related to that at this point?
Correct, Your Honor. And then I would suggest a roll call.
Yeah, I was planning on a roll call, yes. So there's a motion and a second. Any Alderman want to speak to this issue? Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I echo a lot of Alderman Kuhl's sentiment, and I was so impressed with the way that you lay out your line of thinking and how scientific your brain works, and I always think it must be frightening that people now have the opportunity to try to follow how my brain works, but I'll do my best. As a city that aims to be pro-growth, it's hard to do so and not follow the temptation to just follow the path of least resistance. So I've been sympathetic to the arguments that you guys have brought forth, and, but not quite compelled. And it's a business's natural tendency to resist regulation or anything that's going to make, making money harder. It's really the reason a business exists, and yet it happens all the time, every time we adopt a new building code or water management, et cetera, and yet the building and development industry prevails. So I don't have any doubt that those parcels will still have an opportunity to be profitable and move forward. And I also believe that our staff is not rigid. I think they are going to work with you to make sure that those parcels are viable for you. So the next 20 years are going to look a lot different than the last 20 years, and I don't say this adversarially, but your vision for the land may not be compatible with the vision for the city, and as we speak as an elected body that represents the city, it's our job not to just think in the short term, but also the long term. And I hope this also gives support to staff, as I believe strongly in this overlay district, and I hope we, as a council, support you as you aim to create that region up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Matson.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've listened to this for a little bit, and we haven't had a lot of discussion about it. We certainly understand looking forward, but Planning and Zoning looked at this, and they came up with a recommendation. We usually look to them as good advisors to us. We've done, and we talk about it every time we get together, about how the great things we do in this city and the huge growth we've had over the many years. I too, Mr. Kuhl, remember growing up and everything north of Kimberley was a gravel road on Division where I live, and doing some interesting things there. So yeah, many of us, and so growth is inevitable. Certainly, we need to look at what that is. I agree with that, and sometimes adjust. I am concerned a little bit that we're having this discussion now at the last moment, when we haven't had much discussion up to this point, but I also do believe we also need to support current business, current things that are going on, and people who have helped us get to the point where we are. We asked, you know, Mills Chevrolet came here, and we asked them to come here, and we moved, we had a huge discussion about the casino going where it was going, and there was no talk of this. We had, I mean, if anybody, there's a few of us on council that remember those discussions, and we begged them to do all that, and there was huge conversation where and when and what that was going to do, and we were fine with that, mostly. And then I keep going back to, you know, supporting folks. The state of Iowa, if we remember last year, recognized Davenport as the small business community of the year. Davenport's never been recognized as that before, but we were because of the growth, because of what we've done, because of how we manage stuff. I understand adjustments. I understand looking, and we're doing that, and we're taking that on, but for someone who has been here a long time and an entity that has supported Davenport and put a lot of effort in and followed the rules, quite frankly, I'm concerned about changing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. And I'd also just want to say thank you to both Candy and, sorry, the other representative for coming. I really appreciate your time, and you've certainly put in a lot of time for this, so thank you. I'm wondering if, because this is really kind of the first public discussion on this, so I guess I would like to get from staff as to, or whoever would like to speak, what has been going on in regards to meetings and what discussions have taken place over the past few weeks? I know that there has been a few meetings, so I'd just like to get that out there for everybody to know, because this has come up more so today. So that would be one. And I also asked previously to look at, as I go through what the requirements are previous and what we're asking, recognizing that there's things that certainly we just can't do, right, in regards to parking lot numbers, those things. So previously, I'd asked about what are things that Kim Grandfather did, and I know that we've received some information from staff, but again, just to put that out there for the public to see, it would be great if we could come to a win-win to where, recognizing that we want to make some changes, and we have a vision, and that vision has changed from 20 years ago, and we should. That's good. We want to continue moving forward. But are there things that we can meet in the middle? Because I recognize that there's things that certainly just can't be changed. And I heard you say, you know, you're certainly for things in regards to landscaping and those kinds of things. So I guess that would be another question that I have. What can be done to where we can do that? Is that an option? And have those discussions taken place, assuming that they have? So again, just to put that out there for everybody to hear, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. I think I would potentially, Bruce Berger, if you want to come up, you know, what has transpired, that's a very, I think, a good legitimate question, because they are differences. Has there been any movement towards finding some ground in between and so forth? I think that was the question that Alderman Tompkins asked, and are those compatible with the long-term philosophy that we have in mind?
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. As far as the meetings question, I'm aware of at least a meeting or two that I know maybe individual Aldermen have had. It sounds like maybe with Pasternak and Mr. Green, and I know some questions with staff on some of the same questions that Alderman Tompkins raised. As far as, but that's all I'm aware of, so I don't know that they've been ubiquitous. As far as the... As far as the, some of the, like, the grandfathering in question, yeah, the, the way we've explained it in general, when you're, this is a new ordinance that would be adopted with new design criteria, which would apply to new development. And I believe in THF's case, they have several undeveloped outlots that these would apply to. There are some existing properties that are already in existence, and they're grandfathered in, they're, they're non-conforming, but, but legally used. And then, kind of to, I think, the point that Alderman Condon mentioned, we would, we would look at, because it's more developed than some of the other properties, we would look at how those properties fit into what's, what's reasonable, what's common sense with regard to the new design criteria. So, it's a little easier with a blank slate to apply the new criteria. You need to do a little bit of adjusting sometimes when, when you have a little bit more fixed assets in place. So, but I don't know if that totally answered Alderman.
Thank you. I, I think, again, that gives us a little bit of information. I think the, maybe just as a qualifier, maybe to some, if this is amended and that would be approved, and there are items that somehow find, are looking to find middle ground and would like, what, an exemption from that or whatever, is that, Tom, is that feasible based on that? And that, that's an opportunity? Or maybe you can give us a little more clarity related to Alderman Tompkins' question?
Well, you're on the, right now, you're on the final consideration vote of this. The only way to have discussions with the petitioner about what pieces of this overlay district are problematic and which ones can be lived with. I don't know that those discussions have occurred. I have not been a party to them. That doesn't mean that the rest of staff has not. But otherwise, back to your, your first part of this question, if it is amended, the P&amp;Z took this geography out. It came to the council with a positive recommendation, excluding THF. The council wanted clarity on, well, what would your recommendation be if THF was in, as you might recall. And, and so the council elected to send it back to P&amp;Z to get clarity on that. P&amp;Z unfortunately didn't add it back and, and give us a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation on the whole geography. But they did refuse to add it back. And in doing so, I don't know how we can interpret that as anything other than a negative recommendation. So, if it is amended to add that, you're going to need eight, the council's going to need eight votes to approve it if it is amended to add that geography.
Okay. And, and I guess the amendment would need the supermajority?
The amendment would not, Your Honor. But if it's, if it's amended to add that geography, then it's going to be the interpretation that eight votes are required to pass the ordinance as amended.
Okay. So, as it sits now, it doesn't need a supermajority as it, as it exists before any amendments are made?
Right. I would imagine, though, if someone doesn't want it amended, they're likely going to vote no on the ordinance.
Right. I got you. And the, the, again, just to clarify, the, the amendment needs a simple majority, but then the newly modified ordinance would need a super, would need a supermajority?
Correct, Your Honor.
Okay. Just to clarify. So, I think we're going to move on to Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Question, it's, in terms of process, making the assumption that the, this amendment passes, and there is a supermajority, then that passes the amended ordinance. If the, if there was a desire to build in the future on these outlots, the process that the, that, that the company would make would be to go to P&amp;Z if they wanted a non-conforming use. Is that correct? Would they have the option, in other words, to propose something that was a non-conforming use, taking again through P&amp;Z and then through council?
I think there'd be two options. One would be if they are something that a variance can be obtained for the requirement, then they could go to the ZBAA and ask for a variance to that requirement. The other would be to rezone the parcel to eliminate the condition. But once you get into small parcels like that, those rezonings are questionable. But in this case, it's, it's really going to be commercial in a commercial area, just different conditions. So, it should be all right.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you. I guess I'll, I'll start with a point of clarification then as well. So, there is no way to divvy this up so that we ask for the supermajority vote to include THF and then vote on the overlay district as it's either approved or, as it's approved that way?
Well, I could think of two ways that you could do that. If it is amended, somebody could move to divide the, the question and have two separate roll call votes, one on the geography without THF and one with the THF geography, or just the THF geography. So, you have the, it'd be a motion to divide that question. The other would be is vote on it altogether. If it fails, somebody in the prevailing party, which would be the ones that voted no, we would need a motion a second to reconsider the vote that just occurred. That would put us back to where we were before the vote. Then an amendment could be made, or a motion could be made to reconsider the amendment, and you could undo the amendment and then vote on it as it is originally presented tonight. So, there's, there's two ways to do that.
And, and currently, we have a amendment before us.
Which we haven't, which we have not voted on.
Which we have not voted on. And that would either have to be taken off of the floor if we wanted to go one of those two routes that you have just explained to us. Is that correct?
Well, the first step to either one of those twos is approving the amendment.
Okay. All right. All right. That helps with clarification. So, I guess what I would say is I, you know, I have brought this up in the last six weeks several times and have been advocating for better retail development and raising the bar. And I think Elmore Corners, North Elmore, is the place to start. I think we, we do need to have better design guidelines there. We do need to start building better places, and we need to start doing retail that is sustainable. I think the outlots on the THF property are an important part to the corridor and to Elmore Corners. And when we talk about second life cycle of some of these retail businesses that are being built, look at, look at South Elmore, and the Walmart property there is now vacant again. It's on probably, it's, it's third life cycle. We still have Walmarts in town, but they've moved along. So have several other businesses have moved north. So, what's the sustainability of the retail that, that we're building? And that's questions we need to ask. Do we still need to be building very large square foot buildings that are very difficult to repurpose with humongous parking lots? And I understand that Hobby Lobby is not in the city of Davenport, but it's close enough. And that is maybe the most gigantic parking lot in the Quad Cities, and it's a vacant building, and it's going to be very hard to, to find businesses to, to take that land and do something with it. So, I do think we need to, to change, even if, as we vote tonight, it doesn't start here. But we need to start rethinking, what, what does retail look like 20 years from now, and what role does the city play? And then the last thing that I would like to note and confirm in the plan was that there are no further restrictions for uses, so, on, on these outlots. So, the same bill, the, the same businesses that could move there before can still go there. The issue is they'll just be held to a higher design standard. And as I stated before, that's, that's the look that the overlay district is, is proposing for the entire North Elmore corridor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you for letting me speak again. So, my concern here is now, if we do the amendment on a regular vote, and that gets put in, and we, then we go to the one that needs a super majority and vote no, we're, we're voting totally no against the entire design standard. Okay? So, understand that. So, so know that, Mr. Warner.
And if I could
Please.
Add to it, if it is a no vote on that, and you
And you have one year.
And you don't reconsider it, then it's one year.
That's right. So, understand your vote here. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that. If we add this amendment on a, just a regular vote, and then we go to vote on the supermajority, we're, and it's a no, which we'll see. You have done this, you've stopped it for a year.
And just qualify, if you would, Mr. Warner, if you would, you said unless it was reconsidered. That would be the reconsider, that process that you outlined about either splitting them or doing another process?
Right. Right. So, if you, if you don't split them, and you vote on it altogether as one, one package, and it fails, if, if the people who voted against that don't move to reconsider it, then it will be shut out. And that gets reconsidered, or that motion passes by a majority, then it'll be shut out for a year, the whole, whole geography.
And it's only the no votes that can do that?
It would only be the no votes that could vote to reconsider if that fails.
Okay. Well, obviously, if we get to that point,
Sorry.
We'll be asking for ongoing
Not vote, but move for it.
Discussion, yes. Let's go to Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Mayor, for the second opportunity. I might need Bruce Berger up here to give me some clarity. I would imagine, with respect to staff's ability to work with these parcels, you would almost need a plan in hand to appreciate what exceptions are going to be asked for or needed. So, I would imagine that that would happen at that time. But the clarification that I want to make, it's my understanding, again, that this is not a rezoning, this is an overlay district. And so, if they need an exception, they don't need to go back to P&amp;Z. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the design overlay district would be enforced at the staff level? And where, where would that exception be granted at what, at what level or at what board?
Right. Good questions. Well, it is being adopted as, and Corporation Council can correct me, but it is being adopted as a, as a zoning ordinance change. So, the overlay is zoning. Depends, though, your second question on, you know, depending on what flexibility they're looking for would kind of depend. I, I don't know that I can answer right off the cuff on whether, you know, it's something that could be, as, as Corporation Council mentioned, if it's, if it's something that violates a condition of the overlay district zoning, then it could be a rezoning of that particular condition that could come forward, in which case it would be a P&amp;Z council decision. If, if it's something that, you know, perhaps is more subject to, you know, a waiver, something that we could, we could do through the building code, site planning, you know, it's possible there might be something at the staff level that we could handle, depending. But it's kind of hard to tell right now. Is that consistent with your?
Did it answer your question, Alderman Condon?
Well, I, I'm going to try it one more time. So, if there is a use that is proposed for the land that is in compliance with the current zoning, but is not in compliance with the overlay district, at what level would they get an exception on the rule of the overlay district?
With a use, there's not going to be a
It's in compliance with the use. It fits within the zoning, but the new overlay district, say, wants to give, wants to require more landscaping than they can accommodate. Where do they get that exception?
Bruce, do you have that answer on landscaping?
Or parking, or whatever the case may be. Sorry for the confusion.
I am Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development Department. I think the first question is, is if, if a use is proposed within the overlay district that might otherwise be allowed in the planned, or in the underlying zoning, in this case, planned development district, there's only five uses that are specifically called out as excluded. Those would be single-family, detached, residential, self-storage facilities, billboards, outdoor storage, and there might only be four. I thought there was a fifth one. So, if somebody came along and proposed something like that within the overlay area, first of all, I think that's probably not very likely. But in that case, I think it would, it would go the Plan and Zoning Commission and Council as a rezoning or an amendment to the, the ordinance adopting the, the standards that you're considering tonight. Back to the question about appealing a staff decision. First off, I could say that since 2006, which was when I joined the city, we've had a highway corridor overlay district, which has, has an appeal function to the council in a matter that couldn't be resolved between developer and staff. I don't believe that's ever happened. Also, with the Design Review Board being created in 2008, so about 10 years, again, an appeal mechanism to the council, I don't believe that's ever happened. So, I, I think my point is that we have always been successful in working with developers to find a win-win, if you will. As it applies to the overlay district tonight, there is first an appeal to, if this is a matter of design, not use, there's an appeal first to the Design Review Board. And if the Design Review Board can't reach a, an agreement or a, a good conclusion, then there would be an appeal to the council. I don't believe that's going to be very likely in either scenario. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, listen to this conversation. Lot of confusion, lot of lack of understanding. Our council is going to make a big decision. You know, we add regulations, whether it's stormwater, building codes, or this over, this oversight. You know, it's going to have an impact on businesses coming in. You know, Alderman Gripp talked about businesses that are dark. You keep adding regulations on, it's going to be harder and harder to find a developer to come in and turn the lights back on. You're going to be harder for developers that want to come in and do a development when they have additional regulations like this. So, and then to listen to the conversation, you know, doesn't sound like good government to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. After listening to this conversation, you're right, Ray. I'm, I'm as confused as anybody up here. But I really wish we'd have had this discussion about four weeks ago.
Well, I think that, obviously, there's a lot of questions at the 11th and a half hour here. We are in this position now. I see Alderman Rossen. Yes, did you want to make comment? Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, very good discussion, everybody. And unfortunately, it didn't happen four weeks ago. I do want to start by saying, I really have no interest in this vote. I mean, I really have no interest in a year passing before this comes back. So, let me just notate that. That should not be happening. So, I've given a lot of consideration to this, and I've, I spoke with Ms. Pasternak prior to the meeting. And I just wanted, I think everyone up here made some very good points. And when I listen to everyone's commentary, I still come back to the same point in time in that, as every decade passes, the city of Davenport changes, the world around us changes. And that just inherently means that the way we do things has to change. We can't continue to do the same things that we have always done and somehow magically expect different results because that's the definition of crazy, right? I just recently got back from my hometown, which is in Kansas City, and I deliberately drove around looking at all of the new development. And there is a slew of multi-use, a lot of development using a similar design, stand overlay district. And one of the nice things about those districts, when I travel around the country, is that they do draw in new business. And I know Alderman Ambrose was making the point that, you know, additional regulations makes it harder and harder to find developers to come in. But I don't see that happening when I travel to other cities, when they're looking at the same kind looking at the same kind of development. It's actually more of a draw for developers because you know when you're going into this kind of overlay district, you have a pool of shoppers that are gonna be coming. It becomes a destination place for people to come and hang out and spend their money. Um, in the bigger picture, as far as the city of Davenport, um, we need to be mindful and more prudent with how our commercial areas and how our residential areas are developed going forward into the future. Um, we have not been mindful and prudent in the past, and it's not about us against businesses. Uh, we should be working in a partnership where as we make changes up here to benefit the entire city, those changes will also benefit the businesses in the city. Because if Davenport really becomes a destination place, we need to have those neighborhoods and those commercial districts there to support that concept. Um, we want people to come here and want to go to Elmore Corners and hang out for the day because there'll be all kinds of things to do to do there. We want them to come down south of Locust and hang out in one of our walkable neighborhoods because there's something to do there. And part of this for me is consistency. Um, as we look at, I mean, for this council, as long as I've lived in Davenport, which has been 18 years, um, I think this council of of really any of them is is really the most forward-thinking in my mind and willing to put ourselves out there in order to create change. And change is not comfortable for a lot of people. But if I think about Elmore Corners and, you know, having this overlay district, I want to see consistency in our planning for the city so that whatever we implement here, it's setting a precedence for everything else that's gonna follow, for development on Brady, for development on Harrison, Locust Street, Rockingham Road, all of these areas need to have that the same level of focused attention and and prudence that we're putting towards Elmore Corners. Um, for that reason, at the moment, even after, uh, Mr. Warner's convoluted thing, I was having a hard time following you on that, what we need to do thing, um, I would like to see THF included in the district, not because I think it's gonna harm you, I think it's actually gonna help, but I I'm also very interested, as Alderman Tompkins said, of making sure we work with you to make sure there's some comp- you know, there's some, uh, we have some ways to assist you going forward into the future, so it's not as cumbersome as as you think it might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. And I guess before we move on and, uh, we, there are a lot of different opinions. People have done a lot of work to do this. So obviously, we don't want to have, uh, we can obviously debate, that's what good government's all about, and having those kind of issues. And I think everybody's, uh, comments and ideas are definitely very worthwhile, supportive of a great company that's done great work, uh, at the same time looking towards the future. And I found in my relatively brief tenure that, um, that issue of we like that development, but not here. Um, the change issue has caused a lot of people, a lot of angst on a lot of different issues, and it makes it very difficult because this group, I know, have done their homework and have invested in that. So it's a difficult decision balancing the future with the current and still keeping mindful of the great work that's happened in the past. So with that, if there's something new, Alderman Ambrose, please, uh, share that.
Well, thank you, Honor, for the opportunity to keep this great discussion going. You know, just to add on to what my dear friend Rita Rossen said, we have one of the largest developers in this great country just told us about the impact this was gonna have. So, you know, I'm not a developer, and I don't know how many, well, we have one great developer on the city council, and that's my partner JJ here. But hey, we we just listened to when the largest developers talk about the hardships that additional regulations are gonna have here in town. So let's not forget his comments.
Okay, thank you. We have, we've had a great discussion. I think, as we've said, it's a lot of information. It is somewhat, as we've, some of us have discussed, uh, before the meeting, interesting that we're having this in-depth discussion at at this moment. Um, but we are, and now we have to move forward. So I want to make sure I'm clear, we have a motion and a second on the floor to amend the men, uh, amend this ordinance that would, um, let me get straight here, include THF in the overlay district. I'm gonna do, so let's go that through that process first, and I'm gonna re make sure we get the steps right as we go forward. So first, on that issue, to in fact include THF in this overlay district, uh, roll call, please.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
No.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Ambrose?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Seven yeses, Your Honor, three nos.
So to make sure I'm understanding, we have now a decision, a majority decision on this particular issue to modify the amendment, I mean, the, uh, ordinance that would now, um, include THF in this discuss- in the amendment. Okay? Correct there?
Correct. The overlay district has been amended to add the THF, uh, uh, geography.
Great.
At this point in time, uh, again, you you can vote on it, uh, altogether, and then it gets very convoluted on reconsiderations, or you someone could, uh, make a motion to divide it, and we'll have a roll call vote on, uh, the ordinance or the overlay district geography that does not include THF, and then follow that with a roll call vote on the overlay district as applied to THF.
Okay. Do all my colleagues understand the process we've just said? So at this point, we have an option of, as ti- I want to just clarify from my own statement, make sure I get it straight, to divide this into the overlay district excluding the property, the THF property. Go ahead. I'm got, I'm getting a nod.
Correct, Your Honor. And we could do, you go, you all could do a roll call vote-
On that?
-on that. And then that would be immediately followed by a roll call vote on the overlay district as applied to the THF geography.
Okay. Good. So we have one, one vote with it out, and then discuss, and that it's out entirely, and one then on that district itself?
That, that's an option.
If someone makes a motion, I I understand.
Calling the question.
I second calling the question.
So there's been a motion and a second on calling the question that stops debate, and you go to a, um, roll call vote if if the council wants to do that, and if there's a division on that and and people don't want to go to immediate vote right now, then we're gonna have to roll call that that, uh, motion to close the debate.
Okay. Everyone clear that. So if we're not going to close the debate previous to that, is there a roll call to, well, is we need a motion and a second to to not close the vote?
No, it's already been moved and seconded to close debate.
Okay. So if people do not want the debate closed, they have that option to say this?
They should speak up and ask for a roll call vote on that.
Okay. Roll call vote. Nobody asked for that. Okay.
Let's go.
I would like the debate not to be stopped.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have-
Well, you don't need that.
We don't need a second, just a motion to ask, okay?
We're gonna take a roll call vote on the first motion to close debate.
Gotcha. Okay. Roll call, please.
Sure. Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Wait a minute, let's let's clarify. We're voting, we're voting now to not close the discussion?
No, you are voting to close the discussion.
Close the discussion, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Clul?
No.
Tompkins?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
No.
Rossen?
No.
Dickman?
No.
Um, eight yeses, Your Hon- oh, excuse me, one ye- two yeses, Your Honor, eight nos. Got that reversed.
So the discussion-
So the discussion can continue, uh, motions can be made.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to either, uh, more discussion or make any motions that they may have in mind? Pardon me? I don't see it on here. Okay. It's not on mine. There we go. Alderman Rossen.
So, okay, I would like to clarify for myself and anyone else. Um, Mr. Warner, when you say split the vote, can you just clarify the pros and cons of doing so?
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, pros to that would be, uh, where you have two roll call votes on the two separate geographies. Uh, one, uh, they both need, um, well, one needs a, well, they both need super majority, okay? But we'll know which gets it and which doesn't get it. And then, uh, then we will, uh, it's much cleaner than if you vote on it altogether and it fails. If you vote on it altogether and it fails, then you would need a motion to reconsider from one of the, uh, individuals who have voted against it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see. Alderman Condon.
Uh, earlier, when you were, um, talking about the two separate votes, you were saying whether THF would be in or out, and I think that led to some confusion, at least for me. Rather than saying in and out, could you say in consideration or not in consideration for the vote? Does that, do you understand what I was asking?
Yes. If you think if you divide the question, uh, on the one roll call vote, THF will be in. If you, on the other roll call vote, it will be out.
In consideration or in the overlay district?
Okay.
Think of it as a map.
So if someone makes a motion to split the vote, we would have the non-THF prop-, uh, geography or properties would be one vote whether the overlay district will apply to that. Then we have the THF geography, and we'd have a vote whether it applies to that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would make the motion to, uh, split the vote, voting first on the overlay district without THF included, and then voting second, um, on the overlay district with THF included.
Uh, there's a motion and a second. I just want to clarify, that's the geography that they own. Okay, so is that correct? Okay, it's not, it's THF's geography would be excluded from this first vote. Okay, but everything else would be included. Okay. Um, is there any question? Alderman Mattson.
Just, uh, since we're on the extra clarifying, needs a super majority on both vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alderman Mattson, I think I misspoke earlier. Uh, if if it is out, if the if the overlay district does not include THF, uh, which it would not on the first vote, that's a majority, because that has a simple majority because it had a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about what we're voting on, um, and what day it is? No, it's a different deal. Um, so we're having a vote.
Yes, please.
Okay. So as we understand, we are voting now with a roll call vote that all of the geography that excludes THF-
Uh, Your Honor, you're voting on Alderman Gripp's motion to divide the question.
Oh, okay. So we're having that first, to divide the question. He did mention that the about the first part of the division, but what we're doing now is dividing the vote. That's the vote right now, dividing the issue.
Taking a, yeah, I believe there was a second on that, wasn't there, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a vote on the motion to divide the question.
Okay. There, we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna go with roll call vote anyway on this. So let's do a roll call vote related to that.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Okay, for clarification, now we have decided to divide the vote. One of those votes will be all of the geography or property that does not include THF, uh, and that would be the, um, the ordinance as originally determined, uh, the overlay district, we would, we're approving or disproving that. If we, that will take a simple majority since right now that fits for everybody. Is that correct?
There is a positive recommendation from P and Z-
Correct.
-on that geography.
Great. Thank you. So we're gonna do a roll call vote, but a simple majority will take care of everything that, all the geography in the Elmore Corners overlay district excluding THF. They're proper. Okay. Roll call, please.
McGinnis?
No.
Clul?
No.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
I think we need to clarify.
Can't, no.
Okay, no.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Okay, seven yeses, Your Honor, three nos.
So that passes.
So for clarification, let me, if I may first-
Okay, the effect of this, let me do it in shorthand for you.
Please.
The effect of that is that the, uh, the ordinance as originally proposed tonight, the overlay district and the geography as originally proposed tonight has passed.
Without THF in it?
Without THF, as originally proposed.
Okay. So everything up there, if you liked Elmore Corners overlay district, everything but THF has been approved?
Correct. Now we need a roll call on the overlay district as applied to the THF geography.
Right. And just so we're clear, it would be, it's either we're voting that it stays out, and that's what the original part of the recommendation for plan and zone.
No, Your Honor, the vote on this would be to approve the application of the overlay district to the THF geography. So if you want it to apply to the THF geography, you vote yes. If you do not wish it to apply to the THF geography, you vote no.
And that would be, is this a super majority, which one?
Yes, sir, it's a super majority.
And which majority is the one that does what? Let's make sure we clear.
You're gonna need eight ayes or yeses for it to pass.
Okay. Okay. With that, so we gotta be clear of what we're voting on here. Okay? Roll call, please.
Clul?
Wait, who made the, uh?
Yes.
That was originally done by Alderman Gripp when he split the vote.
Alderman Gripp's motion split it.
Mm-hmm.
So you gotta make another?
Uh, no, Alderman Ambrose, it was already moved and seconded, and, uh, Alderman Gripp's motion split it into two different votes.
Yeah. Okay, so we're still, I think we know where we're at here. We did the overall dis- overlay district, we've a, we've approved that. Now we have to decide if THF is in or it's out, and if in fact, if they apply to that or not, since a yes vote, excuse me, a yes vote means that they-
Are in their geography, the overlay district applies to their geography. If you wish that district to apply to their geography, you vote yes.
Okay.
If you do not wish it to apply to their geography, you vote no.
Great. Thank you very much. All, yeah, this will take a super majority of yes votes. Jackie, please. Roll call.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Ambrose?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
No.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Um, seven yeses, Your Honor, three nos.
So therefore, that is voted down, and THF is not included in the overlay district. Am I correct with that discussion?
Correct, Your Honor.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Um, now we're going to move on. Um, our third consideration, uh, for ordinance case number REZ 18 dash 04, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 33.11 acres, more or less, of property located on east of Jersey Ridge, or Jersey Metal Subdivision and north of East 53rd Street, from A1 Agricultural District to R2 Low Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this? Your name and address, please, and, uh, word.
Good evening. I'm Adam Sights, uh, with Advance Homes. We're the petitioners for Pheasant Creek LLC. Uh, just wanted to thank everyone for the process. Uh, we're in our third consideration, and I know it's been a little lengthy process, but we've really appreciated the the debate and the concerns, uh, that the neighbors have brought forward, and we're here for any questions or concerns that anybody might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none. Will an alderman move third consideration of this ordinance? It's it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any aldermen? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Our third item is a third consideration. It's ordinance for case number REZ 18 dash 05, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 7.41 acres, more or less, of property located west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek, from A1 Agricultural District to a PDD Planned Development District. Is there any public Seeing none, will an alderman move the consideration of the ordinance? Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And our last item on discussion this evening is a second consideration for ordinance for case number ORD 18-02, amending Title 17 to incorporate a zoning component to promote and create commercial identity of the Rockingham Road corridor through design and use standards. The text document will include a map and, a map amendment from the, for the area along Rockingham Road from John Phil Drive in southwest, in the southwest to Marquette Street in the northeast portion of the corridor. City of Davenport is a petitioner. Is there any public with business on this this evening?